Okay. We'll call the September 19th, 2018 Barnes County North School Board Meeting to order. And just got our teacher reps here, we recognize those. And then turn over Mr. Severson for some thank yous.
Congratulations to the Barnes Field Girls volleyball team, they got second in the North Dakota Tournament. And then our homecoming court this year was our queen was Carter Whelan. The candidates were Jordan Everson, Bailey Supir, and Hope Wilson. And on the boys' side, the king was Jacob Harstead. And his candidates were Mason Houghan, Gus Porter, and Cole LeVere. And then the staff homecoming court, the queen was Alicia Boingberg. And Melissa wants to explain how that came about, she can. The candidates were Emily Barnes, Melissa Bits, Tracy Heinz, and Ryan Fleisch. And then the king was John Samuelson, and the candidates were Bud Cruff, Stacy Schaefer, and myself. So congratulations to Mr. Samuelson and Mrs. Boingberg.
Okay. Agenda item, do you have anything to change or add?
Any others? Anything else? Good.
Nothing? Okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I make caution, first the agenda?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. So we've moved to the consent agenda, which is minutes, bills, and financial reports. Any comments or questions on any of those?
One change on page two, we're going to change wording.
Minutes?
On the minutes, yeah. The minutes, if you can. On the section about student handbook, we just thought maybe the wording should change because it says that changes that had been suggested at the July board meeting were incorporated. Incorporated. July board meeting is what it says. And then incorporated, and the policy committee has reviewed these. Motion made to approve student handbook. Didn't we change back the handbook so it wasn't reading as the July meeting? Correct?
We were going to take out some of the stuff that was talked about at the retreat.
First of all, it should be not reading, it should be retrieved.
Retripped.
Because no decisions were made at your retreat.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering if we need to reword that little section to, so that it reflects the actual, what we did, or how it was handled.
We made some adjustments, some adjustments need to be made yet, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, because we, there, those suggestions were talked about at the retreat. They were put in, but then they were taken out and changed again.
But the way I understood it was is, at the July meeting, when they were reviewed, you made suggestions, those suggestions were acted on, the policy committee reviewed them, approved them, then there was things discussed at the retreat that were put in, then taken back out. So we were back to the suggestions from the July board meeting.
It doesn't show that those were taken out.
But it doesn't show that, I think that's, you know what I'm saying? I don't think it, to me, I mean-
Because it said they were incorporated, and then we made the motion to approve. It doesn't say anything that those from the retreat were taken out. That's where I think the point is.
See, but she's saying, she's missing the July meeting.
But all I'm talking about is the stuff from the July board meeting that were suggested, those were incorporated. I didn't, anything, address anything from the retreat because they went in and they went out.
We didn't say we put them in or out.
Because they weren't, they weren't incorporated at all because-
Changes that have been suggested at the July board meeting were incorporated, and the policy committee has reviewed it. Motion made to approve the 2018-19 student handbook. That is correct, because you're, because-
Nothing from the retreat was acted on.
Was brought up at the retreat, was retracted, so what she has here is actually right.
So what, because I don't, I don't see where any changes-
Well, there were, the suggestions from the July board meeting, there were some wording changes. You talked about the VOTEC bus. Some of that stuff was talked about, some just wording type things, those were given to Mr. Wilson, and he incorporated those, and then the policy committee reviewed those. And then there was the retreat, and you discussed some other changes. He put those in that night of the board meeting, he took those back out, so we were back to what had been suggested at the July meeting, and the policy committee had reviewed and okayed.
Yep.
So that's, that's why it says it that way.
Okay, well, that's, I asked-
It was confusing.
Mike and I had a discussion about it, because I was confused, and he was as well, so we're trying to ensure-
Well, it was confusing.
Right, exactly, so, okay.
If there are, if you, if you, really, if you have a better way of how you want me to say that, we can do that.
No, no, now, yeah, no, just acting as if it didn't occur.
Yeah.
That's how it has to happen now.
Okay. Any other questions, bills, or financial reports, or anything? If not, we would do a motion to approve the consent agenda. So will we, September, and Rob, roll calling?
Chad?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yeah.
Brent?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
The president's report, I just got one thing. I went to the school safety meeting they had in Valley City on the 28th. They had a lot of law enforcement agencies, there are teachers, parents, legislators, and to get input on what everybody's doing to make schools safer. There was a lot of, we had Valley City School, they had people from Can Do, Castleton, a lot of different places. It was one of six that was held across the state, sponsored by the North Dakota Department of Public Education. And they brought up a few things about what kids are doing, and what kids and parents would like to see. One thing they talked about is the tip lines. So I'm just curious, what, do we use anything as a tip line here, or what do we use? Do we use the tip 411, or do we use anything for the tips?
We're creating, we're implementing that tip line that they came up with.
The new one?
Yep, the new one.
The one for, stand up for?
Yep.
Okay, because that was just new and odd. That's what we're looking towards?
Yeah, because they had come down, and they met with Mrs. Albright and I about that, and that was one of the aspects that we're going to start creating, and then part of publicity of getting other things out there. I think our junior class has chosen to, there's a bunch of things that they can do that also provides funding. So they're looking at doing that, and that's creating flyers and stuff like that to get that text-to-tip awareness out there for community and students and all of that.
Because that was one of the things, the kids came up with, they said, you know, if it's provided, they'll use it.
Yep.
What the kids said that night. So I just was, went to that, and so I just wanted to touch base on what they had down in Valley that night, so. Career and tech, I'll jump to that, I give you all, we are absolutely not going to meet till tomorrow, so this is kind of an overview of what we had last month, it's kind of our end of the year, and a new start. We had a new board member from Valley, which is Ryan Mathias. And most of it's kind of the new stuff for the year. We talked about the new career outlook magazine, which featured three of the kids from the current, or former and current students at the vocational center, which was a good PR thing for us, and along with, got a lot of input back from the new ag program. They're also starting, if you see anything out there, there's, we had some fundraising for the new ag department, trying to start some FF ag chapters, so that's out there, trying to raise some money there, a lot of ag committees in town are getting behind us with that. We had the water leak there, the carpet's all done, Grupfers got done with the new LED lighting, which when you see the, when we talked about, when you see the bills, we're not going to have a bill for a few months because of the rebates that came from that, the vocational. Said our portfolio's down there, and officers, and pretty much that's about what we got. Tomorrow, we're going, we have our evaluation, they have an evaluation on vocational, which they did last week, we'll get all that report tomorrow. And who else have we got coming tomorrow? Pretty much just some basic cleanup stuff, chain of command policies and stuff, and all we have there, but that's kind of a copy of our minutes and what we're going to talk about tomorrow, if anybody has any questions there. If not, we'll move to Mr. Severson for Timothy Director's report.
On the 17th of October, is, we'll have a seating meeting down in Edgley for the fair district volleyball. And then the paperwork for the co-op with Valley City has been submitted to the football co-op. We're waiting to, for a decision based on what high school activities we'll decide. When I went into the new, what they, what the new football, the brackets, we would put, if Barnes County and Valley City together, would put us as the second highest double-A team. And in agreement, what they want, in the agreement is that if numbers were to increase and push to triple-A, we would dissolve the co-op, which obviously, we want to do that, we really wouldn't want to be playing Bismarck and Fargo's, and so. So that's been submitted, and we'll hear, I'm not sure when that, when that meeting is.
Any questions, Mr. Severson? If not, Mrs. Bits, technology report.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, the guy that was here updating our access control and our cameras is actually gone, so all of our new software is in place, and we got a new camera out the parking lot that does a 360 view, so that's super nice. You can totally tell the difference in quality from these new cameras and the old cameras. I always get it verified by asking Mr. Wilson and Bud about these things, because they're kind of, they've kind of come in to be in the camera Nazis. So, you like the cameras, Mr. Wilson?
Huh?
You like the cameras?
Absolutely, no. No. No, they're good. They're, I mean, the quality difference between them is exceptional, and, I mean, just a matter of what, five years?
Yeah.
When you guys first got them, and-
Do you need a microphone, Mr. Wilson? Okay. I think I'll be okay, hopefully. So, I'm in the middle of updating some of the information for our security practices that get passed off to the sheriff's department, like our zones and things like that, that have changed throughout our building with our door access control, and the motion detectors in the buildings and stuff, so if they get a call, in case of an emergency, they'll have access to our zone list, so if the monitoring company says it's zone 114, that's a problem in your building, they know what part of the building that is in. Speaking of building things, so later down the road, since we've talked about, I think at one of the meetings this summer, it was talked about updating the rest of the cameras, that we would do that at a time in the future. So, we'll look at doing that, and then also something that we need to be thinking about for the building in the future, I'm already thinking, like, ahead of time, is the software that runs our building controls, our climate controls, like the GNR controls, that'll probably ring a bell to you folks, that software is going to be coming to end of life. So at some point, we're going to need to be planning for some upgrades here in our building controls, and I've made Mr. Severson and Bud aware of that, so that'll be coming down the pipe in the future.
What, how far in the future?
I don't know, I said to Bud that he should get ahold of Doug, who has been our rep in the past, to see how long we can possibly go, because what usually happens with end-of-life software, it'll work for so long, you just aren't going to get any patches or updates with that. So, my guess, if I had to guess, I, I don't know, I would say a couple of years, that maybe we could stretch it out, but until I hear from Doug, I don't know that. Schoology is, it seemed, I haven't heard anything going bad, so that's our learning management system that we've implemented, and the high school teachers have taken off with that. Of course, we've had to work out some kinks with kids, and how to access their inform, just basic navigation stuff, but I told a teacher, I don't remember who I was talking to, and I told the teacher the other day, we're finally seeing the fruits of our labor with this technology, because when we started our one-to-one, basically, we were pretty new with our one-to-one when we moved into this building, and the high school kids, they struggled. I mean, they made it through, but they, they ran into more roadblocks and gripped more, and needed more help. Now, these elementary teachers are doing such a fantastic job of working with kids at that lower level. By the time they get to high school, like, we just gave them, here's your Schoology username and password, and they could just boom, 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 you know, they can just log in and navigate through stuff, they're used to doing things online, they're used to creating things, so it's kind of fun to see those kids coming up from the elementary and being strong at that point, and being ready for that versus when we first implemented using technology. So that's been going really well. I have three elementary teachers that I'm going to be working closely with, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, which is perfect to start getting that pushed down to the elementary levels. And we will be choosing one parent at the end of quarter one to pilot that, to work through what the parents see, and how that works with parents, and then at the end of the semester, we'll eventually go live with that product for the parents. We've implemented a new help desk software, and that's going very well. I even have Bud using it. Yeah, maintenance requests, they come in online now. Yeah, he fulfilled a maintenance request today, and then he deleted it. I sent him a text, and I said, Bud, you don't delete those when you're done, then you don't have a record, don't delete those. So we're, we're working, we're working.
Maybe he should go to the elementary for a while.
What?
Send them down for training.
Our events are being streamed on YouTube now. I tried that software, when the Cube went away, I tried another software, and didn't like that, couldn't do it from the iPad, so I'm just, I'm just giving YouTube a try here, there's a YouTube Live option, so like, our volleyball has been live streaming.
So what do you go to?
Their matches. You can go to our website, it's right on our homepage.
Right on the website?
Yep, BCN Events on YouTube. And right now, the home volleyball matches are on there, because they've been streaming those.
Do they record, and then play back later?
Those guys do YouTube Live.
Right, but you say you can't go back to last week's game and watch it?
Is it archived at all?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So YouTube Live, yes, it streams and then it keeps it.
Okay.
So it's like a channel, and you go back, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and the same with our board meetings, I'm putting them on a BCN School Board YouTube channel, and that's all on our website. And then last, we're going to be having our first Family Engineering Night in October, October 22nd, so Mrs. Jerry Houghan and Mrs. Undum and myself met after school today, and put together some logistics of that, and how we're going to get that information out to the community, and we're going to hold a little event next Wednesday, where we're just going to go in the elementary science lab and play with all the STEM stuff, so. If anybody wants to join us after school, if you guys want to come in and play with Ozbots and drones and Redoos and stuff, welcome to come check in. Okay, any questions?
Questions? Thanks, Mrs. Bits.
You bet.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay, some members of the Burt team went to the Threat Assessment Training in Fargo on September 12th, it was Mrs. Albright, Ms. Glass, myself, and Pat Sand, and that one really dealt with being able to pick up on behaviors before issues are going, and more and more districts are looking at that emotional aspect of it, and figuring out counseling and stuff like that to circumvent it before it becomes an issue in schools. A lot of schools are, that's an area where they're, where they're struggling at in that aspect. And then today, we had our early release, we had school safety was the objective, and we had the sheriff deputies come out, and they put us through scenarios, you know, it's 2:20, go to where you would be at that time, and then we worked on making calls over the phone intercoms, over the speakers, and just going through what you would do with calls if it's in the elementary wing. Are you evacuating, are you barricading, just going through those, and it created a lot of good discussion, and you got to see things that didn't quite work, or we had questions on, I mean, for instance, the phone intercom system, you know, if we do the all, call to all rooms, can everybody talk, and just one person talk, and we discovered that whoever's making that initial call is the only one who's able to talk and be heard on it, and then to hang up right away, and the communication lines of keeping it going to communicate where the situation is. Has it continued, is it still in the high school wing or the elementary wing, just so that that communication is going. We talked about getting a little bit of training on all the staff members being able to drive a bus, how to start it, go up with it. Mr. Samuelson actually went with some, and he was showing them when we did the first one, on how to start the bus, and that there isn't, you know, a park or whatnot, just how to go about doing that, and then getting used to, you know, being in a bus and having to take your turns wide, and not like you do in a vehicle, so those are things that we'll be looking at doing. The whole buildup, as I explained to the staff, is to eventually do an entire process of it. You know, we have the alerts, we have it, we evacuate to one of our reunification sites, and we go through that process, so that in the event that it happens, we're familiar with how it goes, the parents are familiar with it, and I've spoken to some about having, you know, access to user properties for reunification sites, and that won't go out until the event happens, because what they warn us on is if people know where that is, they can plan for if you're going to end up meeting at those sites, then they can have stuff in place there. So we want to keep that as quiet as possible on there. It was really good getting the thought process going of all the things that you could think of, issues that we would have, potentially, what-if situations, what would you do, and I thought it was really, really productive, and the staff was great in being actively involved, all of them were, so that was good. Mrs. Undum is our new North Dakota Honor Society advisor, and she'll be working on growing that honor club this year. The Family, Career, Community Leaders of America, they'll be in Edgley on September 26th, and then next part is student discipline. It's down across the board this year as opposed to last year. Detentions, last year at this time, we had 22, we have four this year. In-school suspensions, we have one this year, we had six last year. Out-of-school suspensions, we have one this year, we had three at this point last year. So, and just the overall, I would say mood and attitudes of the high school students, especially this year, is a lot better than it was last year. I think they're a lot more relaxed, and know what, what it is with the, all the different school rules that we implemented this year. I expected more issues, so I'm happy, and I don't want to jinx myself, but they've been really, overall, really good at, and not a lot of disrespect if something's been brought to their attention, you know. We have some that get their phones taken away for having it in class, but there isn't no outright refusal to give up the phones, so that's, that's been a good one. The last part is the enterprise homework help time during our enterprise time, that is going good. I think it's ma, making our students, not all of them, but a majority of them, very conscious of what their grades are in their classes, and going and communicating to the teacher, I have this grade, because if they're being taken out of an enterprise class, they want to get back in there. So that's their incentive to get their stuff in, get it done. A lot of students that go on the list, you know, after one or two days, get themselves off the list and are, are back on there, I mean, we'll always have our continuous repeaters that are on there, but it also gives that student and that teacher more time to work through, okay, you have a test, you missed it, that's a perfect opportunity to be able to make up a test, rather than having to come in after school, or find a time, or pull a student out from another class. So we started that last week, this is the second week of it, and it's getting more, more efficient with it. The teachers are getting into the habit of announcing to those students that they have that are on the list during the fourth hour class, of where they need to report to, and then making sure that we check that they're attending those. And that's all I got there.
Questions, Mr. Severson? Thank you. Mr. Severson, superintendent.
Reminder that our board meeting in October is Tuesday night, the 16th, due to the Fall Administrative Conference. We get out of school Thursday, Friday, so we have the meeting Tuesday instead of Wednesday. On October 10th, they have a dropout prevention, re-engagement seminar. The 11th and 12th is the Fall Educators Conference, we've got a number of people going to that. And the next week, we're going to school Thursday, Friday for the Administrative Conference, and then the following week is the School Boards Convention.
What's the Fall Educators Conference?
That is what the union moved their teachers off of the two days of, that we did in that school, because they were getting such poor attendance.
Yeah.
So they put the ominous back on the school districts to allow teachers to leave and find subs for them. Because nobody, nobody was attending when there was a school.
Away attended.
So they wanted to get more teachers involved. It started out as a Title I conference. Lisa and Sarah will go this year, and then who else did we have?
There are four other teachers, Tina, Julie, Kelly, and Jerry.
Jerry?
Yes.
So that was, actually, that was a Title I conference they started, and then it moved into the Fall Educators Conference, because they were struggling so, so bad to get teachers to come when they didn't have school. So they decided to move everything to this week, but you, but Century Code says you can't take those days off, you have to, you have to have these two days off for Fall, for the Fall Administrative Conference, or the, was Teachers Convention is what they used to call it. So those are the two days we have to take off, but they moved their conference to a week before that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks.
I am trying to, I'm, okay, I'm a little confused, so there's no longer North Dakota United, or a D E A?
Well, it's, it's now North Dakota United, and it incorporates all state employees and teachers.
And we do that, that's a week after?
That's the week, week before the, the two days we have to take off.
Okay.
So we take two days off, but then that used to be where the teachers had, teachers and administrators all had their conferences. The teachers were struggling to get people to attend, so they moved it a week before when there was school, and schools can't take those two days off to let the teachers go, they have, you know, they have schools, so they wanted, figured that teachers would be more apt to come when they were under contract.
So they're not, they won't, they won't use the two days, when they had the two days off allocated to be able to use that as an option. Nobody was doing it, they would rather have the two days off. So they moved it the week ahead, and because teachers will be more willing to miss school time to go to those conferences, rather than give up their own personal time.
Because they're, I mean, what happened was, the schools weren't having, I mean, they weren't counting those two days as contracted days, so teachers didn't, they didn't have to go.
Okay.
If you had it in their contract that they had to go, then that's the ones that went. But so many schools went away from that, so teachers quit going to that conference, and United wanted more teachers involved, so with the help of DPI, they moved it into the week before.
So is there any requirements as far as, do the teachers come back and brief the other teachers on what happened, or anything like that as far as-
Well, Title I does, they, they do a lot of that, I mean, Lisa just into it this year, but Sue and Sarah did a lot of that last year.
Yep, yep, yep.
And they did, I think they did report it out last year, so they, they do have-
But there's no requirement from, from the school, it's just the teachers get together on their own and do it?
I don't know if we had, we didn't have anything last year, so, I mean, that might be something we could implement, just, just because of that fact that, because we do have, I mean, and it's, it is, I mean, I'm not, the conference is good.
Right.
They do a nice job with the conference, and that might be the only thing that we need to do, is just have them report out and, yeah, create a staff meeting, whatever.
They, they did last year too, during the staff meeting.
Right.
Sue had come and asked, you know, and it kind of works out that way again this year that we have our staff meeting after they've been to that conference, so they'll be able to update, you know, pass along whatever information-
Any other questions? Thanks. Any other committee reports we got right now?
Just that building ground one with, with the roof, we just need to, I don't know if we need to have a meeting or if we need to just, if I send you guys the proposal and or take a copy of it, take a look at it and give Bud a call and see what, what he's discussed with, with the company if you wanna do that.
I don't know.
Oh, we have, we have a, there's a prob- problem with the roof on the gym, above the gym. It's second time it's happened, so we fixed it for twenty-one hundred dollars and it, same thing happened again, so now they're twenty-one hundred dollars, they'll do it again, or ten thousand, they'll do it right.
Should've done it right the first time.
They didn't, see, they didn't propose this last time, they just came in and fixed, just fixed it and then it happened again.
Do, do we check on somebody else to come take a peek at this?
Well, that's what I asked Bud and he said, he really didn't say much, he said, you know, he hasn't said, I haven't worked with them enough to know.
Well, if they did last time, they suggested to do something and it didn't work, now they wanna do some other, I would like to see somebody else take a peek at it.
Come fix it for twenty-one hundred dollars, but it's gonna leak again and I'll charge.
Yeah, there's no, it's not leaking, it's just the fact that if, if it ever does rip or anything, then it will leak and then we will be in trouble because it's above the gyms and it'll go all over the gym floors and so that won't be a good situation. So, okay, I'll, I'll do that, I'll, I'll talk to Bud in the morning and.
See if somebody else just take a peek and see what they think of it. Cause if it's sloped or something, it may move and rungs. From the pictures.
Was it in the same place reported?
I believe so, yes. Yep. And that's why they want, Bud said they wanted to put pavers or something up there to, to keep everything intact.
Yeah.
So, I can do that, cause I asked him the same question and he said, well, he really, you know, they've done all of our inspections and everything, you know, so he said, I guess I'm okay with them, but I had the same question, whether we should have somebody look at it too, but.
Well, just curious if they did the same thing last year and they're proposing the same, one of their proposals is do the same thing as they did last year.
Yeah.
You know, didn't seem to work, so.
I'll do that. I can do that.
But that was just on last year?
I don't remember, was it, was it last year? It wasn't, I don't think it was, within the last year, I believe.
I think it was.
Couldn't have been very long, I mean, if you were here.
Yeah.
For it, so, what's, what's it actually doing, it's not leaking? I can look at it later, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, if you wanna take a look at it, I'll show you the pictures.
Okay. Okay. All business, we got board reorganization update.
And Amy had sent, sent you guys that email, she forwarded to you from, from Amy to Cook. Century Code says that if you've been reorganized for ten years, we can vote to change upon the majority of qualified electors voting in a question. But additionally, subsection three provides that by resolution of board in a reorganized district, which we are, may change to an at-large voting for school board members if there's a variance of more than ten percent in the population between any of the districts established geographic areas with resident candidates.
Those greater than ten percent.
So, you're looking at the Spiritwood versus?
So, we just need to make motion to change that?
That's basically what you said, telling us is that, that all it would take would be.
If we wanted to go all at large?
Yes, yep.
It just takes a motion of the board?
If all at large.
Resolution.
But I don't know if that's exactly where we wanna go with it, but that's the only way we can do it if we do it that way, is go all at large.
The board of reorganized district may change to an all, to an at-large voting for school board members. So, what they're saying is you'd have to, unless you go to the people, you, you could, you could still designate if you wanted to, but you have to go to the board.
Otherwise, we'd make a resolution with some type of plan that would go to the board.
Yep, and the people would vote on it.
I guess I.
If we want at-large or districts, that's the question.
And why don't we want at-large, I guess is my question.
To me, it's more like, why would we, I mean, I get making, if we make the decision at large, I still think you should have a public meeting.
I do too, for instance.
Yeah, just, it just wouldn't have, you just wouldn't have to vote on it.
Right.
But you have the public meeting, you'd still wanna have a public meeting and tell people what you're looking and doing before. I mean, I wouldn't wanna make a motion tonight to make it at large.
No, I think what we wanna do is set some time for a public meeting and give them the options, here's what we can do or get some public meeting going.
Sure, throw that in with the tax meeting.
Could've.
But I'd rather make a motion.
That's what we need to do, I mean, that's where I'm at, I think, I don't know what the rest of you guys think, but I think we're to the point we have a public meeting.
The public needs to hear it before we just do it.
Before we just do it, yeah. Get some ideas from it.
Okay.
I used to think districting it all was a good idea, but the more I listened to board members, it's like, I'm, I'm kinda at large the whole way, but no. Well, we need people, we actually need some people.
Yeah.
So, when do we wanna call a meeting for that? Should we set it before our next board meeting?
It's up to you guys, I mean, we can.
Pretty busy, no?
Might be, might be tough.
Might be busy, no, and if we're, if we're just looking at that, all we gotta do is if we, we gotta have this done by about March if we end up going to a vote, so we've got a couple months.
Okay.
Could you actually get some thoughts on paper before we just have a meeting?
Okay.
That's just me.
Hey, you're gonna wanna all be on the same page, so when you get, ask questions, you're all saying the same thing.
But I think we just gotta go and see what the thought is up there, which way they're looking.
Being good.
Huh?
Being good.
Yeah.
You think people wanna leave it the way it is?
They're, I'm here and they don't wanna be all at large, I don't know what you hear. You hearing the same type of thing?
Then people want to step up.
And I think if we get out where people can talk a little more, I think maybe they'll understand, they're, they need the information, what we can do, what we can't do.
Well, I think if we didn't have so many board members, that'd be nice too, cause then it would be easier just to get a few from each of the districts, but that's not necessarily fact either.
And, and changing your number would require a vote.
Would require a vote.
Yeah, you could, you could, you could just go at large all nine.
Just so we are just changing.
But if you wanna go seven at large or five at large or whatever you wanted to do, you'd have to go to the board.
The only way we go about a vote is change it, because of the populations, change it to all at large. Everything else is gonna take a vote, and then what else?
Yeah, let's get the information out and have a meeting on it and.
But I think with harvest and stuff, I think we could wait a month or so.
You'd go into December.
Just start bringing it up to people.
Yeah.
And you'll hear what's going on.
Call, call and say we're gonna have a public meeting.
Start talking about it. You'll get an earful.
First you will.
Big time.
I haven't yet.
I think when you do it. But I think start talking about it so people get it out there so they can start thinking about it. You have to really be able to explain your why, why you're wanting to make that change, cause I think if you can answer that question, it won't be as brutal to.
It's easy to say the why because we didn't have anybody on the ballot last election.
Exactly.
Well, it's not just the why of it either, but it's one district, it's not, and it's not rural separated as opposed to city separated as opposed to, it's one large district, pick from it.
Yeah, everybody's coming up.
So, who'll talk about it? Next month, if we're getting closer, we'll look at, set it down.
Okay.
Okay. Budget approval.
We just need to approve the budget and what we have for, we're projecting our total revenue at four million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four fifty-eight, twenty-two and our expenditures at four million, eight thirty-nine, four hundred. So, we're looking at, at those two numbers you have correct?
About three hundred and sixty thousand over last year.
Expenditures, four point eight thirty-nine, four hundred and revenue, four point six.
Yep.
That was with the value, the estimated valuation that we had.
Yeah, a little bit higher.
With the roughly two hundred deficit expenditure, if you say.
Yep, yep.
Good. So, we need a motion to approve that? Any discussion, questions?
Hey, Samuel.
Motion to accept our budget.
One second.
By Rob. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call.
Chad.
You.
Rob.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Brent.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Next is football co-op.
That was my, the AD one too, just that we've, we've got the paperwork in and we're just waiting to hear, so, once that's done, we can sit down and hammer out the final agreement. We've got a, Mike put together some things that we talked about, so we've got kind of a tentative one, if they approve it, we'll get together, finalize it and we'll bring it to board for final approval of the actual agreement.
Agreement, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, bottom line is if, I mean, they, they could approve the co-op and if we can't agree on, on the term, we, we wouldn't have to be in it if we didn't want to, but we have that option.
Okay, so I probably will see that probably next month.
Yep, yep, once, if they get, once they get approved, we'll take a look at it and I'll send it out after Mike and I hammer it out, so. It's, it's pretty much done, it's just the fact of, we just wanna make sure that we don't, we're not being premature and sending it out to everybody and, and it's, it's denied, so.
Sure, okay.
Quick question on that, I forgot to ask, who was number one? You said that we were number two on the second biggest one, do you, just offhand?
Yeah.
Was it?
Devil's Lake.
Yep. What did they say at their meeting, Mike?
They just put the final draft out today, so. West Fargo Cheney is the, is the largest, um, yeah, Devil's Lake, the Valley City, Barnes County North, we'd be, they are at one eighty-seven, no, they're at two ten, our co-op would be at one ninety-seven, behind us would be Wapperton and then Central Cass. But up, up above would be, the smallest one is Jamestown at three thirty-five.
For A.
For triple A.
Yeah, cause there was a wide gap, if I remember right.
Yep. A hundred and twenty kid different.
So, what does it take you to bump you to triple A?
Either they, they say that we're gonna, they're gonna add more teams or.
And they need to pick a number?
Yeah, well, no, they, they're gonna say, cause right now, it looks like they've got.
If they added two in that division, it would go over the top two.
Yeah, they go two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, so they got sixteen teams in triple A right now. So, next year, if they, or two years from now, they said we're gonna go to eighteen teams and we were the, we'd, we'd have to move up to triple A.
That's what they did this year, they added some teams in their divisions.
Yep.
So, our number wouldn't necessarily have to change, but something in the structure could.
That's what happened with it this year.
That's what happened this year.
Yeah, yeah, cause our numbers didn't change, it's, the structure, the way they did it bumped us from nine, or bumped us from A to double A with the three schools.
All right. Next we have sick leave bank.
Yeah, we met on that and the two proposals that we came up with and we thought we'd have the board talk about it, one of them was to, the, the, the bank would go to two hundred, it would, would draw down to two hundred and then we would fund it as is, every year we'd put two hundred back in. The other proposal was, we used the, the eighty that we, we said in the agreement that, that we wouldn't let it go below eighty in the two years, so the bank would, would be drawn down to eighty and then we'd have to decide how we wanted to, to handle it from there. Is it buy-in every year, is it buy-in every other year, the board just fund it, you know, how, how we wanna do it. But we went to those two, either two hundred or eighty. The other option with eighty is, once it gets to eighty, it becomes the teachers and they do whatever they, I mean, then, then it becomes, they have to continue, they can have it up to eighty, no higher than eighty and, and probably they wanna do that.
A little correction, you would be staff.
It'd be staff, not just teachers.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the whole, yeah, the whole staff, I'm sorry, yeah. So, the staff would take that over, I mean, that's a proposal, but yeah, everybody is in, everybody is in now for the, and I think we had two hundred and was it only two sixty or two sixty, something like that? Okay. And then we, we talked about that would, that would draw down either, if we draw down to two hundred, then the board would just continue to use two hundred as, as a, we use that number, or let it go until it gets all the way down to eighty and then decide how we wanted to, if we wanted to fund it from there, if we wanted the teachers to do it.
Staff.
Staff, I'm sorry, yeah, there's other staff to do it, so that's, it's eighty and then if it goes below eighty, they have to re.
So, the policy group's kinda looking for a direction and they'll go back and work on this, is that kinda the way?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Board could put fifty back in and the staff could make up the difference over under two hundred.
Anything would be.
You know, something like that, so, okay, cool.
So, for the policy committee, which way do you like it to go, something that would be, would the staff would buy into it at a certain point, are we looking to just change our number from say three hundred to pick another number to?
For, for me personally, I, I looked at it as having a little skin in the game, you know? If, if you wanna be a part of this, you have to, you don't have to be a part of it, you can choose to, to keep your, keep your days and, and just roll the dice, but I mean, if you wanna be a part of it, you just give a, you know, your one, one sick day where we decide and then that would fund that bank, so to speak, and then if you needed to draw out of it, and eighty was just a, a number, we could change that to whatever, but it's just one of those things that you wanna have a little bit of a, a buy into it and make, make it worthwhile so that, that people are gonna use, if they wanna be a part of this, you know, let everybody be a part of this sick bank, you have a little bit of skin in the game.
And I know, us, we're at negotiations and I, I think they were open to, they understood the part to buy into it, right? Cause we talked about it at negotiations a little bit, how we thought it should go to the whole staff and at some point, we would like some contribution to that, we talked about that.
I like the second option of buying in somehow, whatever the numbers would be, that's what I'd aim for.
So, we'd pick a number, whatever that number is, and then when it hits that number, they buy in?
Yep.
Or they have to buy in every year? See, that's, I think we're.
No, no, we talked about it, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the number's up there now, we're gonna pick a number to where it gets to that.
Gets to, right.
If it takes ten years to get to there, that's what it's gonna do, take, but once it gets there.
Then you buy in.
Yep.
And then is it a buy-in every year or is it just a buy-in when it hits that number again?
That's what we talked about when it hit that number.
And that's how I.
Cause if we say there's twenty people, it's, it's eighty, pick, where you talk about eighty, whatever that number is, and twenty, thirty people get in, that jumps to one ten.
Yep.
The next year, if it's still over eighty, nobody's buying in. I mean, they're, that group is still in, if some say, I didn't go in, I didn't go in this year.
They can.
Now, next year, I still have that option, if I wanna go in, I can throw a A in and be in.
Yep.
You know, we're not gonna ask everybody to, but if I opted out the first year, I got a shot to opt in the next year.
And then your bank, your bank just went higher again.
Yep.
So, it's still, it might grow way up again, but.
That's.
Cause it's, you know, that one.
We were looking at it like an enrollment period, every year for a couple weeks if you want, or, if, so if you didn't go in one year, you have the option the next year coming in at that enrollment.
If they come in the middle of the year, you could, they could opt in, how many years, it would be the shot to opt in.
So, you guys would rather do that than just have the, you know, you're gonna do it?
That's what we talked at negotiations, I mean, I guess, I don't know what the rest of you think, but that was kind of, Lee, what did you, that's kind of what the talk was when we visited that question.
I'm for options, too.
So, I guess that's the route we're looking at, and send her back.
Put the logistics together, then.
Fine-tune it a little bit, and see. Well, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of way to word that.
Yeah.
Anything on other, we'd add? New business is convention. Maybe you got everything you need there, or more do we need there, we gotta pick delegates?
You have to pick delegates, um, yeah, as soon as anybody knows when they're gonna go, or who's gonna go, let me know. I should know by the first of October, at the latest, cause I'll have to get the registrations in, and we have two delegates, I believe.
You need two delegates and two alternates, I suppose, right?
Yeah, they don't.
Don't ask for alternates?
They don't ask for alternates, so, but we, we, with the number of teachers we have, we have two delegates, so, when we know who's going.
I think we kind of got who's kind of.
So, you maybe want to decide who's going to be the delegates tonight, cause I need to.
Can you need that back?
Notice, I, that has to go in the registration.
Chad, are you going?
What's that now?
Are you going?
I, I have to look at my work, that's when we have our, our, uh, big class that we're gonna have during that timeframe, so I gotta check with work, make sure I can get off.
Cause legally, you and Rob have to go, right? You're the only two new ones, right?
Okay, so, what's the, what's the day that I have to go?
Twenty-fifth.
Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
I actually don't know what the penalty, there is no penalty if you don't go, except you.
You're supposed to.
Always paid to educate ourselves.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
From eight to three.
And you're new, too, aren't you, didn't you quit once, and you should probably go to then?
Okay, so, what we're looking for right now is to look for two delegates for the convention. And the motion for two delegates.
Did I have to show up on the theater?
No, I did, we were last year, and you have to.
We were last to see till Friday at the end, so.
What you guys did?
It was last.
No, you did, you said we were nice.
But we were automatically nominated, cause we were the new ones, yeah.
You don't have to be there until later, Thursday, that week.
Cindy, make a nominee, nominate someone.
Well, who's all going?